Okay, guys. Glad to see everyone here. We got a couple absences on the board this morning, this evening. Notices hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District. Blah, blah, this, blah, blah, that. I'm calling the meeting to order. This will stand for the pledge and invocation.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings that you bestow on us on a daily basis and for giving us the opportunity to do work as the Water District. We ask that you continue to guide us and provide us with the wisdom to make the right decisions on the items before us. Father, it is through your guidance that helps us to make the decisions that will benefit our customers. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna have a public hearing. I need a motion to have a public hearing.
Motion for the hearings.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, number three, we're going to...
You need to close it.
Well, we haven't had it yet. We'll just call the...
Oh, okay.
And in the public hearing, we're gonna remove from the table that was tabled.
Motion to remove it from the table?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. ... Well, yeah, you're up. We've taken it off the table, so whoever is gonna...
Yes.
Consider it discussed for... We've already... Yeah.
Yes. Yes, formalism. There's no penalty.
So, uh, we'll hereby open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak about the tax rate, please come forward. This year's tax rate, the only type of tax that the Water District can levy is to pay for debt service. So this ongoing tax obligation is to go to pay the outstanding tax. I think this year's tax payments are at $1.3 million. And the resulting tax rate is going down from .040101 per hundred dollars of value. It's going down to .03882821 per hundred dollars of value.
Any comments from the public, one way or the other? Hearing none in the presentation by staff. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four. Consider and discuss for possible approval of resolution to adopt the Adlauran tax rate.
A motion to adopt the Adlauran tax rate.
I'll take it.
You got motions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a real quick comment. I saw in the paper the other day, the Brownsville paper, the Harlingen School District, there was an article that they lowered their tax rate. We need an article in the paper that says for the last two years, this Water District has lowered its tax rate. Because if we don't tell the public what we're doing, no one else will. So I really would behoove someone to do that. I'm sorry, our PR person is not here, but that's the type of information we need to get out.
We'll get it. We'll get it to the press.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay.
Do we need a roll call vote on the tax?
Right.
It'd be okay if you all would mention names of voters.
Yeah, if you would, please. All right, Daisy, you wanna call the roll, please?
Vice Chairman, her listing?
Aye.
Secretary Alex Allen?
Aye.
Order Director Al Alon?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, moving on along to number six. Do we have anybody in the public audience, in the audience for public comments? Hearing none. Number seven. Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop and regular meeting of the 28th.
I will move to approve. Second.
Motions by Obolus and Alon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, General Manager's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to mention that we have a video, audio presentation that we have available already, and I'd like to have it presented. And one of the... A couple of the board members will be available at next week's gathering here at the conference room upstairs.
What's the gathering?
Just looking at the video and making sure that we have all the information available for the video and audio that was required.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday is good. If you all...
Is there a committee for that?
What was that?
Is there a committee for that, or it's just whichever board member?
No, just I just need a couple of board members to...
There's no reason you want to just do it at the next meeting? Show all of us?
Well, we are, but we need to make sure that... I think Mr. Herb Houston was involved in the beginning.
Yeah.
So we can make sure that we have the information that was required.
Can you do it with Herb?
And approve it. Yeah, we can do it ourselves. I know he wants to be...
No, I'll be there.
Okay.
Let me know time and place.
Another one of you guys want to attend the meeting, you're welcome to.
Okay.
And it'll be next Wednesday then, about nine, 10?
That's fine.
Okay. Nine, 10. I'll send you email tomorrow, make sure the what time. Then we can look at it and complete it, approve it, and enjoy it too, because it's a fine video.
Anything else, Carlos?
Nah, that's it on my part. Thank you.
Number nine. Consider and discuss for possible approval, board travel to TML on October 9th through the 11th.
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Chairman, I... The board has to approve board traveling. That's why I put it in there. And anybody has any questions on it? But it's for TML, for Mr. Herb Houston?
Yeah, I've asked to go up there. I don't need a room, because my wife, the mayor, will be up there.
Okay.
So...
It's just a conference, that's all.
And I just want to go for the day. I already talked to them. And the reason I want to go is because in the past TML meetings I've gone to, most cities do their own water and sewer. So in the exhibits, there's always a lot of...
Yes.
A lot of that presented. And it's in those exhibition halls that Alex and I have gotten a lot of good information and brought back to the district in regards to odor and stuff like that. So I just wanted to take advantage of it, since it was so close.
Yes, it is a good conference. We used to have TML as our insurance for work my scum years back, but they got outbid it, so we have somebody else. But there's a good company, and they did send us a lot of information on trainings, safety trainings to employees who would get a market. So, yeah, they was a good company. So just make sure that the board approves.
Okay, I need a motion. Or any questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got motions made. All in favor?
Aye.
And all I'm saying, I guess. All right, number 10. Director of Operations report.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members, I have submitted for your approval the monthly report for the month of August, comparing it to that of the previous year for the month of August. There is some increases from last year. I do... I do want to let you know that, in my opinion, as far as what I can see, is that some of the spikes that we've been having as far as the increases in service calls, orders, and so on, have been a lot to do with the current meter project that we're doing. For instance, on the change out, we've had some increases in the meters that have gone up because of the new meters that we've been getting a lot of calls also. Customers that feel that their water, that the water usage and consumption has gone up, and it stands to reason. The old meter that we had was registering consumption that had about 90% or so, 92%. These new meters are now registering at 100%. So the consumption has gone up, which also causes the bill to go up somewhat. So... And then we've had some boxes that we've had to change on the new meters, because some of the old meters, some of the boxes were really broken. Some of them didn't even have boxes. And so we're doing a lot of additional calls that we normally hadn't done, or we didn't do last year. So in my opinion, this will drop, but it probably won't be for another four to five months after we finish with the meter installation. And hopefully, we're looking at... I keep putting, pushing back the meter installation, which I'll get to in a minute, but there's a reason behind that. In any case, the...
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, let me ask a question. This might be better directed to many. When the customers come in and they're, you know, my bill is this much more than... And you get a chance to explain to them, and you can now show them better, what's their response?
They still think that's something wrong. They can't get in line and talk to the neighbors. So we just go ahead and reduce service orders just to, you know, make more. We get hearing what they're asking, and they don't want to ignore us. So, you have to... No. Costs us the service order. We go and we either show up, we're registering, we have them bring over their water, and it's working properly, and they still feel like, oh, they're not satisfied yet, we'll go and go test them.
Have you had any meters not tested correctly?
Not tested. No.
You get a chance to explain to them and how they can put the app on their phone?
Sir, everybody that called basically that called us.
And are they receptive to that?
Yes. I mean, they say all of that's great, but they're going to download it. How many more do we have now?
We have... I just checked before the meeting. We have 613 people signed up, and so that equals about 9% of our customers.
I've been at meetings or met with many when she gets calls, and it's usually questions that they can get answers themselves from the app. And many does recommend that they look at getting the app, because the information's there.
Nobody likes to see their bills go up.
Oh, no. No, and as a matter of fact, we've had some customers that are really adamant about the new meters not functioning properly. And as many just stated, we've had some that we've had to change out only to show them that the meter is doing what it's supposed to do. The change out on the meter is doing the same thing as the other one, though, on the new meter that we had changed out. And we have one customer that Joel was meeting with, that he was consistent about getting his old Badger meter back, because he felt comfortable with it. That's no joke. So we did. I mean, Joel went ahead and advised him and gave him the old meter for a few days, or for about a week or so.
Couple days or five.
And he noticed that there was no change as far as the new meter and the old Badger meter. So he was satisfied with that.
Well, I know firsthand, the alerts weren't, because I get them all the time, you know. If I don't water one week because of rain, and I water the next week, I'll get an alert on my irrigation here.
No, and quite honestly, there's been a couple of them that have discovered that they've had leaks with the new meter, because it's now marking more as far as the consumption is concerned, until they realize that they have a leak somewhere. And there've been a couple that have found the leak, but there's still one or two that are having problems finding it. But these are apartment buildings, and it's very difficult, because of the way that the infrastructure in their apartments has been done.
Toilets running or something like that?
Well, some of them may be even underground. I mean, we've tried different things. We went out there, as a matter of fact, and one of them, Mr. Gavon, myself and Joel, went out there and we met with a lady, and we went around, walked in the whole complex and checking every apartment. And, you know, we haven't found anything, but as far as the meter was concerned, it was tested three different times, and the meter proved to be okay. So there's a leak. Two more, which we weren't able to find. We gave it some suggestions as to what to do in order to locate it. So that's about the extent that we could do, as far as that's concerned.
And if I were to ask you a question, the people that come in to complain, by the time they left and have given, and you've given them all the information, what percent do you think are satisfied?
I would say about 90%.
90?
We do show up and we go into the meter and we do the report, and we show them, look, this is what you're doing. You're watering here, or you possibly have a leak, because water, we use the water control block. And water doesn't stop, something's wrong. We try to explain to them also, what you're doing. Close the valve, it's basically that goes to your house, and you can see only it stops, and it's inside your car. You basically continue, then it's the meter, it's washing up. And sometimes you don't... We found it.
And that's an easy test to do, because they do have a cutoff power outside the building or the house. And by shutting that off, if the meter stops, then there's nothing wrong, as far as the meter's concerned.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My next report with the meter project update, and I left a copy there. I don't submit this for the meeting. I bring it to you the day of the meeting, because I'm trying to get the latest update that I can. It's usually at least the day before, which was yesterday, as far as installations are concerned. And as you can see, what we have left at this point is 276. And Port Isabel, we have approximately 218, and at South Pidre, we have 90 meters left to install. And as you notice, on Port Isabel, we kind of stopped on August the 29th, because we wanted to concentrate and finish up the island meters. And the reason for that is because they had a lot of... They had some larger meters, which would take more time. And so we got to put our personnel out there to concentrate on those large meters. And one of the... Another reason that they're taking so long is that we're finding meters that are actually encased in concrete. They poured concrete on top of the meters, and that takes time. We have customers that have not responded to our request as far as letting us in the property to be able to exchange those meters. We've left notices and so on. So one of the things that we would like to do is that we're gonna give them another chance, and if they don't, we'll either have to go in there and trespass to get that meter changed out, or we'll have to charge them $25 a month to go out there and do the manual reading on that meter. They're not given it much of a choice. And some of these meters are actually on the right of way, but the customer or the resident has actually enclosed that right of way into their property.
Is that on the island, in the backyards?
Yes, sir.
Have we sent them letters?
We've stopped by and called and knocked at their doors. As far as letters, no, we have not.
Yeah, maybe we could send them a letter with their statement, you know, telling them, this is what we're attempting to do, we need you to respond, or something like that. I know there's a push right now on the island to try to get easements back. It's gonna be a fight over that, but...
It is.
But, yeah, we're dealing with the same problem that AT&amp;T has, and all these other utilities that have to go back there sometimes. It's a problem.
That's it.
Yeah, but maybe a letter would be good, and just that way they had something in writing indicating that, you know, because I... The thought of going back there is not a good one. Trust me, I've had people, utilities, I have had the guy from AT&amp;T come by my office, and he was threatened with a shotgun. So I would not recommend you do that unless we contact them.
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta make contact with them.
Well, we're trying, but we'll do that. I guess our next step is, like you said, send them a letter.
Yeah.
But that's not part of the main reason that we're lagging behind in completing this project. What we're going to do, I think, at this point, we're pretty much at a standstill as far as South Pidre is concerned. Probably after next week or next week, what we start doing is concentrating on Port Isabel and finishing those up, and get back into South Pidre once we've contacted with the customer.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question on the type of service on that list on the bottom part. On the work on meter box, what does that represent?
On the type of service?
Yeah, at the six item, the six item down, work on meter box?
Those are usually change out meters that we... I mean, meter boxes themselves.
Boxes.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to. Some of the boxes, for some reason or other, I've driven around a few times, and I've seen meter boxes just laying out. So we have to go back in there and reset it, or we put a new box in there because the other one's broken. There's a variety of reasons, but mainly, that's what it is.
But if you want a tall box versus a short box?
And we've had to do that, in order to keep the... As a matter of fact, we have changed out some boxes in some places, because it's higher than the ground level itself, and we've had a couple complaints where the homeowner has gone through and has messed up their lawnmower, or they've cut into the box with their lawnmower, because the box is higher than the grass itself.
My issue is I have to go find my lid, because it floats away. So I'm gonna try to get a tall box.
Put a brick on it.
Get a tall box when it rains, because it just puddles in that area. It's in the right of way.
Right.
And the easement, and so it just floats away, and so I just have to go find it. It's never far away.
Well, that's okay. It's not as bad as what we've encountered in some of these meters being in the driveway or encased in concrete.
Yeah. Yeah, my neighbors is like that.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Engineer, you got a bunch tonight.
Have a lot of attachments, but hopefully, we can just wrap it up in a good summary here. So first item being Water Plant One assessment. We did receive the report on schedule from Priest and Nichols, we're in the process of reviewing it. And we also had received the raw water transfer pump station. And so that's basically how it opened up my memo, as far as two alternatives being available there at the raw water pump station. One being a rehab, even though it's really not recommended, just because of the state of the existing pump station, you know. But then a replacement is cost prohibitive on the other end. So we gotta see, you know, how we can stay within that goal of keeping the bond at 25 million and, you know, doing basically what's best for us there at the raw water pump station. So that's kind of, you know, what we're trying to figure out at this stage. And, you know, send them back some comments, hopefully, they can work on refining those cost estimates a little tighter, and, you know, go from there.
Well, we're gonna be eliminating some things from some of this anyway, right?
Correct, correct. Because, you know, we'll dive into the elevated storage tanks, because we're definitely looking at, you know, based on TCQ rules, we already have adequate storage without needing to expand our elevated storage capacity. So I mean, easily with Port Isabel and the Luna Vista, they can be downsized to either one tank or taking those down, we still meet the requirement. So those are scenarios I'll dive into in a PowerPoint here in a little bit. But basically, maybe we can jump through Water Plant One before we... Unless we're gonna dive into that, and then we'll jump back. I mean, yeah, you wanna put on the PowerPoint? So these are the slides that we got put together. I guess I can speak to the mic better. So Priest and Nichols has projected our growth all the way out through 2040, and based on those number of connections, you know, we're looking at a... We're looking at having 10,397 connections by 2040, with a peak hour demand of 15.32 MGD. And so the TCQ rule is to have 100 gallons of elevated storage per connection. So that's basically what sets how much we need to have in elevated storage. And we are taking into account, you know, like the Long Island Village, potential of those going to individual meters, and, you know, accounting for like the units behind the meters, just to make sure we're staying in the right, you know, sizing. And so basically...
Could you back up, please?
Sure.
You have permanent residents and then total population served. What's the difference?
Oh, the transient, like the rentals, second homes, that sort of thing.
Tourists?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and my next question is, it's not weighted. You just took basically 12-month average, because of course, some of us are way skewed high compared to normal months as far as use.
Yeah, well, it's that peak flow is where you have the size of force. So that's gonna be, you know, your mid-July.
Summer months?
Yeah, that's basically when you're gonna hit these numbers, mid-July.
I think that's a conservative number.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not a big number.
So you feel like we should have or plan for more storage, or a higher number of population on that peak flow, which, you know, makes sense. I mean, these are, because the, I guess, in the 2012 study, that's the last time we looked at the population study, and I mean, we're just kind of using that with updated projections.
That's it. I was wondering what history we were looking at. That was the last study we did.
Yeah, 2012 was when we did that methodology to come up with a population projection.
South Pidre Island, just last year, I should have brought the numbers. They did through their EDC, and they forecasted numbers all the way out, I think, to 2030 as far as population. They broke it down to residents, visitors, day trippers, I mean, the whole shebang. And those numbers were much more than what you represented.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we're using slow growth rates of, you know, 1.1, 1.7% at the most. Yeah.
It's hard to know without seeing, what was it, 2000 or 2010?
Yeah, the 2012 was...
It's supposed to be a good number for something here, too, right?
Yeah.
They seem low to be. I agree.
Yeah, I mean, this is just using our, you know, slow growth past, you know, our population's kind of fluctuated up and down. So that's kind of, you know...
Didn't you guys do one, Adam?
Golf course?
Yeah. Didn't you do some kind of projections on population?
Jason might have access to those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna see a wave of a higher growth than, you know, what's been happening, I mean, we might want to revisit.
I'll forward you the numbers I got from you.
Okay. All right. So any other questions?
I'm gonna back up a little bit, but from all this reading, what I gathered is, because of the additional costs, Water Plant Number One, and to make it all happen, now you're sort of asking us to maybe forego the elevated storage, the elevated storage here in Port Isabel. Correct?
Correct. Like, at least just only doing one tank, you know, in the Luna Vista is the scenario three we're gonna get to here. And in that process, we decommission both Port Isabel and the smaller tank in Luna Vista.
Have you run these numbers by our volume committee yet?
No. I mean, our next presentation, we were looking at November 12th timeframe.
Why so long?
Oh, just because that's when we have the final report with everything together.
No, 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 no. No, 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 you need to meet those long before, I mean, I, I saw Rudy the other day and he was wondering when y'all were gonna have another meeting. And the last I heard, and what I told Rudy was that y'all were waiting to hear from Freezer Nichols, where would be the best placement for these elevated storage tanks?
Yeah, and that's...
Rudy, uh, let him know your schedule, the schedule that you scheduled.
Yeah, I don't have the schedule in front of me. I have to go upstairs.
Reports have not been in, only that one? Uh, we received one, that one.
Oh, this one? Well, the, the scenario we had it the same day, September 5th is when we sat down and went through this PowerPoint slide. And so, so based on those, these scenarios which, which we're looking at...
But we don't have the, the reports for the rest of the water treatment plant?
The... Well, yeah, the water treatment plant, we received August 30th. So we can go through Water Plant One Assessment because that, that's further along.
The tanks?
The, the tank sizing, I mean, we're looking at...
Couple weeks ago?
At a, you know, basically, this is one scenario they're looking at, uh, taking both things out of service and building up the corner. The second one is restoring Port Isabel with a new tank. And the third one we've asked them to include is, is putting a 400,000 gallon tank in Laguna Vista.
And those reports have already been out, out to the committee? Done all those reports to the committee, the only ones that are pending are the scheduled ones, uh, September 27th, what's that, the other one? And that's one?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we have deadlines coming October 7th.
22 schedule that you gave us.
Yeah.
But has, but has many met to discuss. I mean, if you just send them the reports, that's...
No, 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 we, we presented it to them here, here.
When did you meet last? Last month?
No, it was the beginning of the month.
Beginning of September, beginning of August?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago?
August 22nd. I just don't have the, the...
I agree, seems like a long time. Wait till November.
No, October, didn't it say October?
Well, I mean, I, I think it, it's fair to be scheduling a meeting. I mean, our last discussion was to set up some optional dates because we're trying to improve attendance on the meetings. We wanna get everybody at the same place at the same time, which has been a challenge.
Well, again, this was, this was from the chairman of the committee, I guess. I talked to him maybe a week and a half, maybe two weeks ago, and he said he hadn't heard anything.
Yeah, it's been quiet for a couple of weeks.
He didn't make it to the last meeting this one. He wasn't here.
I don't know, it'd be good to, maybe we can shoot out some available dates and see what kind of response we get from the group.
Do we want to do the same thing again?
Yeah. Well, I mean, like, for example, this slide is a new, I mean, this came out after the meeting. Basically, the August 30th report's out and, uh, so, you know, we can give updates. The raw water transfer pump station report, that wasn't out, one of you, man. Well, it wasn't reviewed, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's, you know, there's, there's...
They got some things they can look at.
Yeah.
New things they can look at is raw water, Water Plant One, and elevated storage tanks, right?
Yep.
Which is the main stuff. So they need to meet, right?
I agree.
Cause I love, I don't wanna get this stuff in January.
Oh, no, no.
Cause I mean, if they're meeting in November, then it's the holidays. I mean, it's gonna be tough, so...
Yeah, the closer you get into the holidays.
To me, Charles, there's a lot of information here. And I had to read it more than once to understand it. It's confusing as hell bottom line.
Yep.
You almost need a flow chart in your mind that if I do this, okay, we go this way or this way. If I do this, you know, we can do this, but we can't do that. And, and the way it's presented here, it starts with alternatives and then goes to scenarios.
Yeah, it's, it's not in a completed form, yeah.
You, you've got a lot of work here. But looking at this tonight, I couldn't tell you what I could recommend.
Yeah, and, yeah, we're not there.
But I'm, I'm just saying, and I'm a director, and these other people don't have near the information that I have to, available to me. You know, I know, I know we don't wanna spend a whole lot of money on an old building, but I mean, concrete block buildings are pretty damn durable if they're kept in good repair. I understand that the new, uh, micro filtration can't be built on site, it's gotta be built on the adjoining property and, and another building and all that. But please chime in, it's just...
No, I, I, I was looking at this earlier and, um, it is preliminary, but, um, one of the things that I was taking into consideration is the mandated, um, uh, storage. And on scenario one, you can actually keep, you, you can actually, you'll have enough storage there. And if you keep the Long, Laguna Vista tank, the existing tank, you'll have about another 30 MGs daily that will go above what is mandated that we have in storage. So we have adequate storage. That, that tank in Laguna Heights is a good tank. It can, it can go into, it needs a little bit of repair, but it, we can start using that. We don't have to build a new one. It's not that old, it's in good shape. It gets a yearly inspection.
It's only closed over valve that we can replace, get a better...
It gets a yearly inspection, so it's up to par.
Yes, it is.
So those three tanks right now will service and meet the mandate that we need. If we keep the Laguna Vista tank, that will exceed it by another 30. And will, will exceed our, our capacity for storage, the mandated capacity for storage.
And that's what I don't understand, why we would ever consider not using the Laguna Vista tower unless it's just...
Is it the wrong area?
Well, no, it's the hydraulics. It's, it'll spill over without that altitude valve closing it automatically, so it's just, it's manually done.
The Laguna Vista one?
Uh, oh, well, well, Laguna Vista?
Laguna Heights.
Like, did I say Laguna Vista?
Yes, Laguna Vista is the one that was...
The Laguna Vista tank?
Yeah.
Uh, the Laguna Vista tank has some issues. And some of those issues is in the way those pumps are designed. They're very hard to reach, uh, for cleaning. For, for, uh, when we looked at it the last time, that was the, the problem that we ran into, or that's what, uh, Charles mentioned that, uh, the engineer, Freezer Nichols, that in order to, 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 you know, I think we flush them out, you have to shut down the system to be able to work on it, you know, as opposed to other designs, which you don't have to do that. But that was my understanding. So, I, I mean, I don't know to what extent we'll have to do work there, but there is some work to be done on that little building and, and possibly some upgrades on the tank.
That little building is a new station.
Yeah, the building, we're talking wastewater, but yeah, it's...
The, uh, the issue there with the tank, it's too small. It's at the wrong area because once you turn on the pump at the water plant, it'll fill up quick. It has no use.
Yeah.
It fills up quick and they have to turn off the valve.
Yeah.
So it's...
What are you trying to say back there?
Yeah. Come here, come here, come here, come here. I know what he was talking about.
Yeah, I think you're, you're...
But if we're having trouble, the, the trouble that we have with the Laguna Vista tower is that it's way too small, right? We're having to, uh, open and close those valves. We can't consistently pump through, uh, our current pumps that feed 100% at all time, right? So the rest of the system needs water while that tank is full, so we gotta shut it off. And then once, uh, we open it back up, it'll dry up on us pretty quick, we can fill it up pretty quick, but then it fills up again. And if we don't shut it off, uh, it's gonna overflow.
Yeah, I mean...
So it's a little more work than it's actually worth.
So it's useful, but the problem is that you have to, uh, open it and close it too often.
It's too small.
It's too small.
It's too small.
But we're, we're dealing with two different bases for what, how much we need. One is the TCQ rule saying we have enough, and one is operations where, which like was our consistent with our 2012 recommendation is that we need a bigger tank.
There's, there's three, three scenarios here that I, I know about that tank. One of them is that it's too small, it's located at the wrong area. And then, uh, three, it's 50 years old, like it's already like... Uh, there's spots up there that you cannot, uh, repair because they're right on the corners. It has too many edges and, uh, spots where you can't get to it. Uh, they can go over it, but they can't get the corners, like it's, I don't know, it's kinda hard to, to, to work with.
It's a 50 year old tank?
Yes, sir.
So it sounds like, it sounds like we just need to replace that tank for a multitude of reasons. Even though it does work, it's just not efficient.
Well, they talked about replacing it at one time. Now they don't have the money to replace it, or they don't wanna spend the money.
Well, it's, well, we have a TCQ rule saying we don't need it, but there's an operations reality that we need to do, so... It's just how do you, how do you wanna, I mean, the scenarios are, you know, we don't have the, the response from the analysis, you know, here. But, but that was the feedback we gave at this meeting on September 5th.
Let me ask you, no, how, what would a new tank in Laguna Vista do for you?
What would a new tank? I mean, it would, it'd give us more, uh, consistent pressure in Laguna Vista itself. I mean, one of the things that I have...
And is that a problem we have there?
Well, I have employees that live there in Laguna Vista and don't notice when I turn on and off the pumps, right?
Okay.
So, I mean, this would allow us to send water to Laguna Vista and also further down the roof, right? Without it having to fill up and shut up on us. So that'll help with the pressure. Not necessarily that there's a pressure problem, but give you more consistent pressure in Laguna Vista. And then you go store. If you store, if you put a new, another tank, it'll have more torque.
Correct.
Uh, for emergencies, you know, like the water leaks or anything else that occurs.
Where do you guys notice the most growth in, in the whole Laguna Madre area? Where is it? Is it Laguna Vista, the island?
What I've seen is, uh, the island and Laguna Vista, yes. And Laguna Vista back to Gulf Course and hopefully there.
You know, in terms of area already being inside the annex, you know, boundary, you know, you have all of Laguna Vista Club, you know, I don't know. It's gonna always stay California.
Right there at the Paradise.
Yeah, Laguna Heights, I mean, they're, they're, you're gonna see 85 acres pop up overnight in there every week.
But that one has a good storage tank there.
The, the, the 85 acres?
Yeah.
It would seem like to me a new tank. If we had to go, we were talking at one time, two tanks and maybe now have a group of one. It would seem like maybe one new tank in the Laguna Heights area that could service...
Well, we are good at taking Laguna Heights, but...
Increase it.
Well, I mean, the...
You don't need to.
Well, the Laguna Heights tank is good. It was built in the 80s.
What happens is the tank in Laguna Heights is fairly new.
Yeah, it's 11.
It's not an old tank and it's one of the, uh, newest ones that we have.
Our worst oldest one is Laguna Vista.
Correct.
Port Isabel.
And it'd be wise to put it further up on 510, like back, back and set up in the center of town. Because, uh, that one right now is located at the wrong spot because it fills up pretty quick. And then it's closed, you have to close it pretty quick and it doesn't hold much storage.
But that's, but that's because of the size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's because of the size, that's why it fills up, yeah.
What's, what's its size right there?
That's... Not even 100, and the one in Laguna Heights is 400,000, so...
Yeah.
We need something like a 400,000, like back on 510 or the Gulf Course to Holly Beach. I think there's gonna be some growth to Holly Beach soon, I mean, but that's our area too.
Yeah, we gotta think about going all the way up to there.
And we'll have to buy property for that?
Uh...
Yeah, I mean, for this...
As of right now, it looks like we might have to...
Yeah, yeah, you wanna pick up a 200 foot by 200 foot area for the tank, and that's, that's...
A meter.
Have we identified any possible areas we could buy?
I'm, I'm looking at that Holly Beach, 510 intersection, see where we can find them for this one. But I mean, like, you know, we do have some old openage that's still a right of way that is probably only 40, 50 feet.
Well, that, uh, that area where that lagoon is at right now, from the wastewater side? All that area is, is the water district, so we might just fill it up and then building, you know. That's one of the areas we'll be thinking about.
Yeah, for our sewer plant, we have to maintain 500 foot separation over here, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we could actually locate it next to that wastewater plant?
Yeah, just stay 500 feet away from the...
But towards the backside, you know, towards the north.
Okay.
So I guess...
That's just one little issue of everything that was in the report, right? You don't have to go over.
That would be a scenario that we've been looking at. Uh, going away with this one is at the wrong spot also, and Laguna Vista, and just get rid of them. And then just a new one back, that one, further back. That's the one that we've been looking at that works the best.
Well, I would suggest that you try to put this information in an easier form to follow and get your bond people to look at it. Maybe we need to have a joint meeting or something, but, you know, there's way too many questions that I have. You know, when you talk about vertical pumps and horizontal pumps.
Yeah, it's, it's not something to get together a couple hours, so...
And it's hard to look at one thing alone. It's like you need to have not just scenario one for the raw water and scenario two, or scenario one, two, three for the storage tanks. It's like, we need to consider scenario one of all the things, right? Cause you can't just look at one thing exclusive from the other. Uh, so we're, you know, I'd love to see like, this is our one scenario for all the things they got up there. You know, we would, we would do this with the water plant, this with the tanks, this with the raw water. Here's the second option, and here's a third option. As opposed to three options in each of those, right?
I think that would be...
Cause you're sitting here with that stuff all day and it's hard for me to pick each of those things and be like, okay, I picked this from here, this from here, and that from here, and that's our best option one. You guys can tell me that better. I think these guys agree. That's what Herb's saying.
Yeah.
And we are, you know, we're in the middle of just discussing draft reports, even though, you know, our schedule for more presentations the end of October, but we're just staying ahead of it for the...
Yeah, a lot of this is gonna change.
Right.
Yep.
So I mean, that's what I'd love to see you do for next meeting. Give us, give us that sort of scenario. And have that ready for the bond committee as well. Just two weeks from now, I think you're able to, to put something like that together.
Yeah.
The, uh, before we move on. You know, it might be who, us to have a meeting, a joint meeting of the board and the bond committee.
That'd be good, yes. I think that's, uh, what we're planning to do is that at that time that we do, that, uh, that the committee is ready to present to the board everything.
We can do that?
Well, you, you, if, if you have a quorum, you probably wanna notice...
You have to post it.
Yeah, we scheduled that mid-October meeting, you know, like your quorum. What do you think, guys?
I think it's a good idea. I'd like to be there. I'd like to hear it all from everybody. Yeah, I'd like to sit with those guys and golf her with them. I don't care if they've heard it first or not, because at the end of the day, we're the ones who have to decide what's gonna happen, so... Uh, I don't mind sitting there and maybe leading that discussion. And then they go back and think about it some more and come back to us with their ideas at a second meeting. But, you know, at least that way they understand our priorities more as opposed to that forming their priorities, which might not match ours, so...
Right, and they bring to, they bring to the table their concerns that perhaps we haven't even thought about.
That's right, yep. I love meetings. This is more and more, let's go to them.
Yes.
You know, I used to pay to be here.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
All right, well, yeah, I mean, that, that sums up the, I guess, the bond Water Plant One Assessment. So we can move on to the next item, which Laguna Vista, you know, there, there was a, sort of, started off with a odor complaint and then it became a TCQ violation because we were discharging onto the adjacent owner's property without an permit being written, so... And so, so we had to restore our outfall back to Laguna Vista Code. And there's a video that we have, that we made one, I mean, it's okay, we can play it.
Do we need to see a video, anybody?
I don't know, this gentleman came just for the video, right?
It's really cool.
Right? I, I haven't seen you work under the door.
You're welcome. I just like...
He's been awaiting the hit play the whole time he was tech there.
The drone is in action here.
Well, he produced the show.
Yeah, see?
Yes.
I don't want him to miss his moment. It's only 25 minutes.
Let's see the credits. I think I can have a glass of water now.
No pressure here.
Yes, and, you know, the, the, the adjacent owners happy, TCQ's happy. So we've dredged this channel. The Cat Tails was our original outfall. And that was the limit of how the water would spread out and really just sort of stay within the reservoir. But we've dredged out this channel, so now we're maintaining our...
Is this right now? You've already dredged it out?
Yeah, this, so that, that's our, our sewer influence staying concentrated and heading out to the bay. And, uh, so we're letting the reservoir dry out as requested by the adjacent owner of Benning.
And that's the area that, on the tanks too, right?
Yeah, if, if, if this ends up being the right place where we can find land for the tank, um, you know, we'd have to build something along Holly Beach. And so, right there is, as we turn, um, that's where we kind of meet with maintaining drainage within the reservoir. And, uh, and this spillway has always been a place, and what we've done is we removed all the silt, restored flow. And, uh, and so we can, we've restored that connectivity to the code before we, we had to supply, you know, silt and gates obstructing it. So, so rather than, you know, the birders really like that pond and the peace for the birds out there in that reservoir. And essentially what we've done is we've moved it out to the code, um, by just, you know, letting the flow get to where it's, you know, permitted by the, by our, uh, TCQ.
So we clean that all out and it was just going straight out that?
Yeah, we, we, like, that's the, the new Holly Beach versus the old Holly Beach alignment. Yeah, we, like, that's the new Holly Beach versus the old Holly Beach alignment, we dredged that channel, it was silted up, and we cleaned up everything in that concrete lined.
When did you start?
We started June, July.
Have you done?
Yeah, it is complete, yeah. And so, I mean, we restored flow back to that code that used to be pre-dried, so essentially the dust bowl, you know, we're sort of maintaining more water, keeping this area wet, and drying it out as the owner's request on the other side of the fence, you know, the Christians. Yeah, so, you know, it's a lot easier to see in the area.
And so, right there, it goes underneath that road?
Yeah, and then that's, that's Laguna Madre Cove, and that, all that's our excellent great flow right there.
But that's nature conservancy right there, right? That we haven't worked on?
Yeah, no, that's, that's just back into like.
This is where it goes.
Cove, where, you know, mixing with the tide, that kind of thing.
Is this the same water that goes into the golf course?
Yeah, yeah, it's there, I mean, this is when we have the concomitia filter turned off, it's going on, you know, when it's on, you know, there's a hook on this.
So that is, which was a wet pond is now a dry pond?
Um, yeah, I think, you know, I don't know.
That, that area right there?
Right.
Yeah.
It's dry.
Did they say it smells better? Talking about the Christians?
Yeah, I mean, they, well, you know, they're trying to, to see like a Bonneville soft flatter, you know, go out there, race peak direct, and that's our goal, so, I mean, they're getting what they want, basically, you know, and the landowners, even though we still have the easement for the right 10 pound water on there, I mean, we're just, we're letting it go out through this channel.
How long do we think that channel will last like that?
Well, as long as we maintain it, it'll last, I mean, the water itself flushes it out.
So you expect it'll stay out? So we've never done that before, what you just showed?
No, we've never had that.
We just were pumping into that laguniti?
Yeah, we just spat out and just sort of, you know, spread out within the reservoir without a concentrated, like, channel like that.
Is that on good? That video, sit on our website, somebody wants to see it.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, in October, we'll be updating our website, kind of using the media affairs consultant to be, you know, maybe that's one of the things.
Can you email it to me?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, going on to number 12, consider and discuss for possible approval, be adopting another, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020.
Just to review the changes that we made since the, since the last meeting, we added the small vacuum truck to replace unit 38, we added a generator for the administrative building, a portable distribution pump, trailers for some distribution equipment, a computer server, and warehouse fence repairs. Then the board asked if we could present a balanced budget that included healthcare for dependents and, and the cost of living increase, and what the board, the budget that I'm presenting today is able to accomplish all those, all those things.
The 50% of the dependent costs?
That's right, that's right, we initiated a, so after discussion with the board, what I needed was better, better numbers of how many people would actually be willing to pay the 50% cost, which they're not paying now, and so we initiated another survey of our employees, I laid out what these costs were, and I asked them if these were the numbers, would you say yes or no, and which one of these would you choose? Would you choose yourself and your spouse, or would you choose yourself and your children, or would you choose your entire family? And there's three different prices, and they made those selections. Now, with those hard numbers, I was able to go to our insurance agent and ask him to double-check all of our work and see if there was any discounts available. They initiated a re-rate of our, of our insurance, and after that process, they came back, and they told us that they had decided to leave their premiums the way they were, there would be, they said they didn't have enough information to know if they should be, if this was a good thing for them or a bad thing for them, basically what it comes down to. So they decided to leave our premiums the way they were, but knowing that, I was able to, to finish the budget, knowing what these numbers were of employees, they already knew what the, what the cost would be, and I had those numbers that I could plug into the budget. It ended up being incredibly close to the amount that I had proposed before, within, I think, like, $2,000 of the number that I had given you previously, so I was able to balance the budget.
How many more employees do you anticipate taking advantage of the dependent?
I think the number went up to 33? 33.
233 from what?
From 12, or do you remember the original? I think it's 12.
So basically, 20 more employees.
That's right, that's right.
Kind of went over them already.
Nope, I've been over it a couple times. It's a budget anyways.
Need a motion to move, to approve, please?
A motion to approve, checking.
Motion, again, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Get a good sleep, keep those rates down, boys. Don't let your kids stay out all night.
Number 13, consider and discuss for possible approval, lease renewal with Pitney Bowes for billing equipment and software.
The current contract that we have with the equipment we use in our billing process is going to expire. We're recommending to renew that contract with Pitney Bowes for three more years. We did not advertise we're using Viper for this contract.
Need a motion?
I'll move to approve.
First and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 14, consider and discuss for possible ratification for emergency purchase of an aerator motor in Laguna Vista wastewater plant.
Yeah, staff decided to make this emergency purchase due to the long lead time for this motor. The current situation is that the basin is only working with one motor, and if we go for the bidding process, we could extend at least one more month. So we don't, we don't want to cause any violation due to the oxygen levels on the basins, and that's why we decided to do this emergency purchase.
How much to verify?
Second.
Let me ask a question, is this, is this amount of lead time, I mean, 12 to 14 weeks, is that, I'm looking, I mean, that seems a hell of a long time. Seems like this ought to be an off-the-shelf item for somebody.
No, we have a couple more proposals, because this, for next year, we have budget two, two motors, so we already have been looking for proposals, and all the proposals has the similar lead time.
How many motors do we have at that plant?
He's adding one, yeah.
One and a half.
We have motions to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 15, consider and review expenditures from August 16th to the 31st.
Need a motion on it?
Just to acknowledge.
I'm going to acknowledge, second.
Motion to acknowledge, first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 16, executive session permitted by Open Meetings Act, V T C A, need a motion to go?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that there's two missing today, two members to hold off until the next meeting, for this update.
We can have another meeting, we can have an update at the next meeting, I want to go ahead and move on this. Need a motion to go in executive session?
So will.
Second, all in the favor, aye. Okay, executive session, please. Number 17, consideration and acting on executive session, no action to be made, done. Number 18, I need a motion to adjourn. All right, need a motion to come out of executive sessions. Second, all in favor, aye. 17.
Motion to adjourn.